Okay, good evening and welcome to the December 6, 2012 City of West Sacramento Planning Commission meeting. Before we begin tonight, I want to remind everybody if you wish to address the commission, there are cards over there. They look like this. If you could fill one out and hand it to Cindy, the clerk, before the end of the staff presentation for each item. You can hand it to her before, but make sure you get it to her before the end of the staff presentation. Because there seems to be a fair number of people here this evening, just a reminder, there is a three-minute clock. When you get up to talk, you have three minutes to address the commission and then I will politely ask you to wrap up your comments if you go beyond that. Okay, as a tradition, we begin with the pledge and I'm going to ask Mr. Moore to begin to lead us on.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands by the invisible of liberty and justice.
This evening we have on our agenda three hearings and one workshop. Before we get into that, I actually wanted to congratulate staff and developers on their accomplishment and distinction that they received for the regional award for the blueprint excellence, for the best project integrating smart land use and transportation. With that, I'm going to pass it off to, no, I'm not. First thing, they always put this on the, first thing on the agenda. First thing on the agenda is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Actually, at this point, I have no request to speak, so Cindy, unless you've gotten a card? Nope, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to staff communication. David?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to point out two matters of correspondence for your commission you should have at your desk tonight. First is some correspondence we received earlier this week from the Brighton Broderick Community Action Network. So that's information for the commission. And then you also should have a memo from myself regarding agenda item number three tonight, which is the Buckeye CUP time extension. So that's all for staff correspondence at this time.
Thank you. At this time, commissioners need to disclose ex parte communication. Disclosing ex parte communication when commissioners need to just let everybody know whether or not you've had communication with applicants for tonight's agenda. Nope, moving on. Consideration of the approval for the minutes from November 2000, I'm sorry, November 1, 2012, there is one edit to the minutes that I have. Has to do with ex parte communications at the last meeting. Mr. Olson had communication with the applicant of agenda item number one, the Maryland fence, and not number two.
That's correct.
Okay, so with that change, can I get a motion?
A move, will you approve the agenda?
With the change, all right. Moved by Mr. Olson, seconded by Mr. Moore. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed and abstentions?
Abstaining.
Abstain, thank you. And, thank you. Moving on to number two. This does kind of move fast. Public hearing regarding Anytime Fitness CUP, conditional use permit, and at this time...
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from this item. I will depart and watch the proceedings from out there.
Okay, thank you. Give Ms. Sandin a moment to get out the door before we get going. Hey, Ms. Allen?
Yes, Kathy.
Good evening, Chairman Lebig and members of the commission. This item is for a conditional use permit for Anytime Fitness. The applicant is proposing to operate a 24-hour gym and the facility will be located within the Southport Town Center in a portion of the pad building which is located west of Target. The gym is proposed to utilize three suites in that building and will total approximately 4,600 square feet. The facility is proposed to include free weights, cardio equipment, and exercise room for virtual classes. Although the facility is proposed to be open on a 24-hour basis, it will however only be staffed for eight to 10 hours a day. The remaining hours, customers will let themselves into the building using a key fob which unlocks the doors. And as a safety measure, the facility is equipped with sensors that will email the business owner if more than one person tries to enter on any individual key fob. And this is meant to dissuade customers from bringing additional people with them to utilize the facility when it's not staffed. And the facility is also going to be equipped with panic alarms which can be used in case of an emergency. Based on the preliminary site plan, the project appears to be consistent with city development standards, including parking standards. The town center has a total of 1,315 parking spaces, including 52 spaces directly adjacent to the pad building where the gym would be located. This concludes staff's presentation and staff respectfully requests that the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing, approve their requested conditional use permit, subject to the findings and conditions listed in the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here as well as a representative from Watt Turner who runs the Southport Town Center, so...
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Now, you say the applicant is here. Is the applicant wishing to address the commission or just here for a question?
I think just here for questions if you have them.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, I have one request to speak. I'm going to open the public hearing. Just to run through how this usually goes with a hearing, first, there's a presentation by staff. Second, the applicant can present if he or she wishes to, it's not required. Then we open up the public hearing. This is the point where folks can come up and speak to the commission. We then close the hearing, bring it back to communications with staff and deliberate and hopefully make the decision. So that's what we're looking for. So first on the list, I have, forgive me if I get this wrong, to the Michael Downs or Michael Downey. If you could, when you get up, make sure that the red light on your microphone is turned on since it's the first one. Repeat your name, make sure that we get it right and...
Just be a button on the side of the microphone.
At the base.
At the base.
Good evening, it's Michael Downs. I'm representing Watt Turner LLC, the landlord of Southport Town Center. Just want to come up and say I greatly appreciate Planning Commission's and everyone's work in reviewing the application. Wanted to come up and also show our support for our tenant. We think it's obviously a great use for our center, but also think it's a great use for the community and just would highly hope that it gets approved. A little bit less than three minutes. Thank you.
Actually, before you head down, are there any questions of the applicant before he sits down? No? Okay, thank you very much. At this point, actually, I'm going to leave the public hearing open for just a moment to make sure we don't get into any deliberation that requires him to come back up. Since Babs is gone, Charlie, you can remind me when I forget to close it. Questions of staff?
I have a question.
Mr. Moore?
And this question, I'm not sure if Kathy needs to answer this or maybe even the applicant. I made a couple of calls to people that are open 24 hours a day and all of them have staff on duty at all times. Is there a reason we're thinking that this is a wise choice not to have staff on duty? Or just an applicant's proposal?
It is the applicant's proposal. Staff was, did have some initial reservations and that's one of the reasons why we routed this application to the police department since safety is their job. So we got some pretty thoughtful comments back from them and suggestions and felt comfortable with it after they had responded to the...
Did we see those?
I'm sorry?
Did I see those comments?
They're in the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Well, I, you know, I, I'm still very concerned over the health and safety issue of this element. It being open 24 hours a day and then it's going to have nobody on duty for 14 to 16 hours. And with people on duty, you know, we had a fellow, and we don't have a swimming pool in here, but a fellow downtown died in the swimming pool and they found him in there. You have athletes that are lifting weights and the weights drop on them and they get injured. And, you know, they have a device here that they can press for help, but if you're trapped under a weight, I don't know how you press that.
Well, one, one thing I did actually discuss some of those items with the applicant, there is going to be no bench press equipment there for that reason exactly, so that a bar could not drop on someone with the weights and pin them. Also, the panic devices that they have, they have ones there that actually are on a lanyard so that if people want, they can actually wear them while they work out so that if they needed immediate assistance, kind of like those Life Alert things you see on TV where you can push it and someone...
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. Us older people all know what those things are. You know, but I, and I'm, I'm reading number three on the findings and it's talking about public health and safety. And it says, "The police department shall ensure that the facility is a safe place for patrons during the hours when the facility is not staffed." But then as I read the rest of this, I didn't see a long police report saying what they're going to have to do to do that. I saw that the windows have to be open, the lights have to be on. I think that's all very relevant. I, I guess my question is, first off, I'm concerned about the health and safety and second off, no one else that I'm aware of does this. And the couple of phone calls I made are all going, oh, God, no, we'd never let anybody in here without staff on duty. So I, I'm just really concerned about a health and safety aspect of it. And I know the applicant is dying to tell me why it's a good idea, but, but I, you know, that's where I am with this. But I don't see in the, the report, the police report, saying all the things they're going to have to do unless you're going to tell me that the three conditions, eight, nine, and 10 are the three, the only things they talked about.
That's it. That was all they talked about.
Yeah, it might be helpful to have the applicant expand on his business model for the commission if that would be your pleasure.
Well, that's totally up to the chairman to do that. I, I would love to hear what he's going to do, but, you know, this really never talked about any of the self, the safety aspects because if you're on a treadmill, nobody is allowed on a treadmill in any facility I've been unless there's somebody around because once in a while, people fly off of them. And I, I'm, I'm just concerned about how all this is going to work. So if you'd like to have the applicant tell us how it's safe to have nobody there and one person in the building, I'd love to hear it.
And before I bring up the applicant, Mr. Chase has a comment?
Yeah, I think as a follow-up to Commissioner Moore's questions, and I think I probably would direct this to Mona, our city attorney. My question is, I guess, are these kinds of issues that are being raised here actually within the purview of us as a planning commission?
They are insofar as they assist you in being able to make the findings necessary for the conditional use permit. However, as you might be alluding to, the purpose of the planning commission is land use and planning issues. And I guess this can fall under one of the findings if you so, if you so decide it meets that, but generally speaking, we're looking at land use and planning issues.
Thank you.
Again, before we bring, bring up the applicant, is, this is a private club, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay, so only members?
Yes.
Okay. Applicant, if you'd like to speak, please state your name and just speak clearly into the microphone.
Sure, I'm Rob Canberra and I can address any of your concerns. First, I'd like to thank you guys for your time. Secondly, there was a question of security. We do have the facility under 24-hour surveillance as well. And it's, there's a hard drive not only at the facility, but also at a house. And I can even view the cameras at any time from something as simple as my iPhone, iPad, anything like that. We do have panic buttons. I believe there's going to be one or two, depending on when the security company comes out. There's going to be at a minimum, a handful of cameras with virtual total 360 surveillance of the facility, obviously excluding bathrooms, tanning bed area, et cetera. The entry into the facility is controlled 24 hours a day by a key fob. We do have a guest entrance if you want to come in and look at the place or a potential member wanting to join. You would go in that way. Everybody else goes in through a locked door where a key fob is the only way to enter. There's a sensor if somebody, so if you're there late at night, somebody tries to come in behind you, an alarm goes off. Not only is it loud enough to alert you to the presence, it flags my computer, my iPhone, any of that. The panic buttons that are installed, typically there is a two-minute or less response time, whether it's police, fire, ambulance, what have you. There's a fire station literally several hundred yards away from us. We do have a defibrillator that is required at a gym, which is all gyms. I know you're concerned about injuries if you're the only person there.
I am.
Yes, okay.
I mean, what good's a defibrillator if I'm the only one there and I just have the heart attack?
Yeah, but I mean, that could be the same thing as if you were running down the street, you could have a heart attack there as well. We do have a panic button. If you have a heart condition, please, I, I would encourage you to, or if you had a medical condition, wear the lanyard. If you, you can, if you're worried about walking outside at night or during the day, put the lanyard around your neck, by all means hit the button if you feel the least threatened by anybody and the sheriff's department or police department is going to respond in a timely manner.
Well, you, actually, you answered my question, I just didn't figure out how we were going to do this. So it's going to be, the facility itself is going to be monitored 24 hours a day?
Correct.
By who?
By myself.
Don't you ever sleep?
Yeah, but I mean, if it's set to my cell phone...
No, I'm serious, I mean...
No, no, I understand that, but also, I mean, the security company, if there's a fire alarm, if there's a burglar alarm, it routes to them. It also routes, I believe, to the police station. They're going to respond. I, I mean, any business has the potential to be broken into. I think that that's a very quick response time. You know, typically, again, it's two minutes. There's over 2,000 anytime franchises in the United States now. And as of last year, they really only updated about once a year. They've not had one problem with somebody breaking into the facility to cause mischief mayhem.
Remember, I'm not concerned about that. My only concern is if you have people in exercising, you know, how do we protect them? Because every other facility says they have to have somebody on duty.
That's, that's because they're using weights, free weights, like for example, Olympic bench press.
Right.
That, we do not have that in our gym. That is not a piece of equipment that we carry. You will never see that in an anytime fitness anywhere. And that is because as they're, they're doing a repetition, if they lose control of it, it can fall, it can crush their larynx, they can suffocate. It happened to a, a running back at USC...
That's what I was thinking of, yeah.
...a couple of years ago. Yes, sir, we don't have that equipment. It's all machine and most of the machines also have an added, for lack of a better term, like a, a support so that you can't go down a certain, past a certain point. I'm sure everybody's used some sort of a, a machine weight equipment with pulleys and things like that. Okay, so that's, again, that's not going to be an issue of an injury like that, other than maybe like a muscle pull if you strained something. So, is, is there anything else? Again, the, the 24-hour manned...
Is this a franchise? Is that what you're...
2,000, sir.
I'm sorry?
2,000 gyms.
Okay.
And none of them were manned 24 hours a day. And again, as of this last year, they've not had a problem for a police. We don't carry any cash, you know, it's not...
No, you know, I wasn't concerned about that.
Yeah, but I'm saying, really, there's, it's a well-lit, as, you know, the shopping center is very well-lit. I wouldn't consider it in a place where I wouldn't feel or my girlfriend wouldn't feel safe walking in there at 2:00 in the morning.
Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant?
Just to clarify, your, your monitoring system is, would you, would you call it more passive than active? Like it only responds, like you only respond if there's an actual incident or someone is...
Well, I mean, you...
I mean, there's not someone sitting there watching?
No, but there's a monitor in my office with all the cameras on, feeds on display. And again, if I was at home and I, you know, we'll have employees, I can look at it any time.
But, I mean, my question is, is someone can respond, like within 30 seconds or a minute if there is some...
Well, if it's just, if it's just an alarm, like a buzzer where somebody's sneaking in behind you, it buzzes, it flags my computer. It's not like the police are summoned because I can't tell you how many times where I've spent in these gyms when I was doing my research where two, two friends are walking in to work out, one of them swipes the key fob and walks through and the other guy doesn't and falls in behind them. It just buzzes because otherwise the police would be getting phone calls, it'd be the boy who cried wolf, you know? So it buzzes. However, again, there are panic buttons, there's those, there's those lanyards. If, if you walked in and you, and somebody snuck in behind you and you heard it, you would have the ability to hit the panic button in a timely manner.
As far as the monitoring aspect, I mean, there's always somebody that would be sort of on-call or be...
Yes, it will flag my phone if I, if I request it.
I'm not envisioning someone...
But no, it's not like, it's not like the security company is monitoring...
Yeah, I'm not envisioning someone just watching the monitor for eight hours, but it is active enough to where...
Yes, sir, yeah. It would, it would page my phone, flash if, if I wanted it or, you know, whoever, I said it to, to be able to view it, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Actually, I just, since you're up here, I was going to ask staff, but I, I do support increased fitness facilities in the city, both private and public. I think the, this is an appropriate location type. I want to make sure that you're aware that there is a nearby facility that is...
Yes, yep.
Partially public-supported, okay? Definitely want to make sure you are at least aware of it.
Oh, yeah, and ours will be a little bit different. We are going to be 18 and over in our gym. We want adults only in our gym, especially since it's 24 hours a day. We don't want kids having access to be able to get in there at any time, so strictly 18 and over.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you for your time.
Any other follow-up questions or comments?
My, my follow-up question would be, did you talk to the franchise itself to see if in fact they were having any issues with any injuries ever?
No, I only communicated with the applicant.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm actually not, not carrying any direction whether or not there's a request for, thank you, whether or not there's a request for a continued discussion. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. If there's no further deliberation within the commission, I would seek a motion.
And, and I don't mind, but I'd just like to emphasize again that I'm not opposed to this facility. What I'm concerned about is the safety aspect of having somebody go in there at 2:00 in the morning and be injured and then have to lay there till 6:00 in the morning till somebody comes. That's still a concern to me. If we had a monitoring system going on of some type, other than if I decide I want to look at it, I'll check and see what's going on, I would be more comfortable with it. But I can see that this thing has the potential to get somebody hurt in it. And if I was sure that the applicant was correct and, you know, no one has ever been injured in this facility ever, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable, but I find that hard to believe, that you have 2,000 facilities all over the United States and nobody's there to watch what's going on and nobody has ever been injured when people get injured constantly at a normal facility.
I'm not sure I heard that, by the way. What I heard was there haven't been any break-in incidents.
I thought you said, no one has been injured. But, you know, I, again, I'm not opposed to the facility. I think the idea is great and I don't have any problem with it. I just think it needs to have somebody there to watch them. I'm very uncomfortable and I'm uncomfortable that we're granting this condition that somebody can go in there and I hope we're not making our city liable by saying we think it's a great idea to have a facility that's not manned. I'm still concerned about not having manpower in there. Doesn't mean I don't like the facility, I just would like to have it manned. That's where my call...
Mr. Chase?
You know, I, I share some of the concerns, but I'm, I'm not sure how much, I, I feel we should get involved in a business model that, you know, isn't an outright violation of some of our codes. Question would be though, since this is in fact a conditional use permit application to staff, would an injury or some of the type, you know, something of which Commissioner Moore is concerned, be grounds for rescinding a conditional use permit?
Well, the, the findings for the revocation generally revolve around projects that don't, you know, follow their conditions of approval and other matters, you know, of that sort. So just on the surface, I don't have the revocation findings, you know, in front of me, but I, I would say in that scenario, unless the facility was becoming so egregious where people were getting hurt all the time that it perhaps became a, you know, a significant drain on our, you know, first responder programs, I think such a scenario like that probably would not meet the test for a revocation decision by the commission in that scenario.
That actually brings up an interesting point, whether or not this facility becomes a drain on public resources, including police and fire, as a result of a significant pushing of the button. I'm, I don't expect that to happen. If it were to happen, that could be grounds for revocation of the permit? Did I interpret that correctly? Or what point were this...
I would say, I would say that that would be in the, in the neighborhood of what could be considered under a revocation procedure if that did become a significant problem for our police and fire personnel.
All right. What, what I'm hearing is essentially safety concerns. I wanted to make sure that the applicant was aware that there is actually competition very, very close by, it's across the street. I'm not sure if we've squashed all the concerns about safety as far as the commission's purview when it does come to safety. We're, we're looking at public health, safety in general, welfare. I get hung up a little bit on the fact that this is a private club and the members will need to sign in, understanding that this, this is still our community. And I know that I actually go to a gym too and I have to sign, sign the thing and you kind of wave your rights away when you do that as well. And it's just one of those things, you know, you, sometimes you get hurt when you, when you're working out, but I do understand your, your concerns if you're working out alone at nighttime. Hopefully you're well aware of your own abilities.
Time for a motion?
I, I would entertain a motion.
I, I think, having heard the concerns that have been, you know, discussed here tonight, I, I, I'm not seeing anything that, that would really impede us approving this and so with that, I would move that we approve this as submitted by staff.
Moved by Mr. Chase?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Hearing one, opposition, Mr. Moore. I don't think we need to do anything else on that one, but I will ask staff to read off the appeal.
Yes, thank you. Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commissioner's matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action. fifteen days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you. And that is actually it. Yes, she's on top of it. Next item on the agenda is actually the public hearing regarding Buckeye Terminals' conditional use permit number two dash two, as for the time extension. Mr. Tilly, you'll be giving the staff presentation today?
Yes, I will be. Thank you very much. This item, as you stated, is regarding the Buckeye Terminal Facility, which is located at seventeen hundred South River Road in the area we generally refer to as Pioneer Bluff. If this item looks familiar to you, it should, because it has been before the commission numerous times, first in two thousand and two, and most recently last year at this time. Cindy, this is their presentation, so please put that down. Thank you. So, tonight, we are back tonight, looking at a consideration of a time extension for this particular use permit, which the commission first approved in two thousand and two, heard again in two thousand and five, and then again in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, and now here in two thousand and twelve. When the use permit was first approved in two thousand and two, was put up, the commission at that time put a time limit on it, and then it was re-reviewed later, and commission approved it further, and then starting in two thousand and ten, actually began wanting to look at this permit on an annual basis. And so, we are back tonight for that annual review. This year, the applicant, you know, Buckeye Terminals, is actually seeking a five-year time extension for this particular use permit. Staff, however, this evening is only recommending a one-year time extension. The facility is an ethanol facility where ethanol is brought in via rail and offloaded at that facility, and then brought into there where it's actually blended with gasoline, and then that gasoline is actually trucked to various gas station sites in the region, and that ultimately does become the gas that you fill your car up with. So, the reason why, and partially why, the planning commission has considered this item many times, is that this is an area where the city does desire to see land uses transition to those that would be consistent with the waterfront general plan and zoning. And as time has progressed, the area has, transition has begun, and we do have numerous residential and mixed-use projects that are either now starting to come out of the ground or will be coming out of the ground here in this coming spring, you know, in direct, you know, in immediate vicinity of this particular project site. So each year, we've wanted to look at this project and this use permit in the context of what has been happening around it. Also, in particular for this year, and especially earlier this year, we did experience significant rail congestion at the Fifteenth Street Crossing. And we don't mean to imply that that was necessarily caused directly by Buckeye or not, but that was something we experienced greatly. And as we started working on this with Buckeye over the summer, we did endeavor with their help to try to get some additional data about rail activity at that crossing, both from their company and also with UP. And so, as part of the staff report tonight, we did include, and I want to like to help you decipher a little bit of attachment number six, which is labeled, is a general label as I created, is called the Buckeye Rail Manifest. Couple of the columns on here are particularly important to reference, you know, tonight. Buckeye's spur, which is their spur which comes off the main UP line over there, only has space for six cars. And thus, on their property at any given time, they can only have room for six cars. And that's represented in that column, the fourth one from the left called Spot Cap. And you see on every day for this report, that's six. That reference, that's just a pure number of how many they can literally fit on their track. The other column on this that's most important, I would like to call your attention to, is the column on the far right, which stands for onhound count. Those actually represent the number of cars that are brought to the area that are destined for that facility. And you can see those numbers are variable, but in many days during this time period, there was certainly a lot more than six. And what we've learned in discussions with the applicant and also directly with UP, is that for UP's purposes, they will often bring many more cars to this area that are destined for Buckeye than obviously what Buckeye can accommodate on their facility at any given time, you know, which is six. UP told us on the phone that their general practice is to bring them three days' worth. And so, if you look at that right-hand column, you can see that in some days, there's quite a bit more than six and even quite a bit more than three days' worth, you know, which would be eighteen. So, the net results of all of this, you know, cars, is those cars are stored on the tracks that are adjacent to Buckeye's facility, and as Buckeye, you know, empties their six cars and needs more cars, there's, UP needs to do a lot of switching, you know, in that area, as they need to move the cars around to accommodate not only Buckeye but other users that are, rail users that are perhaps just pulling, you know, passing through that area. So, this is fairly empirical data, you know, that we've been able to obtain, you know, with Buckeye's help, you know, from UP. Does not tell the entire, you know, story out there in terms of rail activity that's occurring, but is definitely an indicator to us that, when, obviously when we first approved this project, which was understood that it would be Buckeye would, at that time, which was BP ARCO, that there would be only six cars per day, five days a week, at their facility. UP, you know, is bringing more than that into the area, you know, each day. And so, although Buckeye at its facility can only handle six, there are often, you know, many more cars destined for their facility that are on, that are stored on the tracks until such time as they can be brought into Buckeye's, you know, facility for use. So, we do believe that this rail activity, you know, is resulting in additional traffic congestion at that intersection and crossing, and potentially safety impacts as well, since that, when that rail, those rail arms are down, the fire station that's west of Jefferson on Fifteenth Street, you know, is unable to access, you know, the South River Road area, you know, from that direct route on Fifteenth Street. So, there's clearly more work that needs to be done relative to the rail activity in this area to help determine how much of the rail activity going through there really is Buckeye-related and how much of it is for other users. That's going to take additional work with UP, and that's not information that we have for you this evening, but it's something we wish to continue working on with Buckeye and UP to try to get a better handle on what's happening over there, and to see if there are some perhaps operational adjustments that UP could make to try to minimize the amount of crossing activity, you know, at the Fifteenth Street intersection. So, with, given that we have that information, you know, still to obtain and to digest, and that we also are now starting to experience significant pickup in activity in the Bridge District with residential projects imminent to break ground in that area, at this point in time, staff is only prepared to recommend a one-year time extension of this use permit this evening, and to allow us to continue to work on this, and then we can return to your commission, you know, next year with additional information that your commission can consider as it pertains to the rail. But then also, we will continue to evaluate what is happening in terms of having this area transition, you know, into uses that are indeed consistent with the general plan. So, we would not support the applicant's request for a five-year time extension tonight, but we would support another one-year extension in keeping with the commission's past direction and decisions on this project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, David. I think your summary and the staff report was extremely thorough, and I appreciated that. Is the applicant wishing to address the commission this evening?
Yes, and that, they do have a PowerPoint, that was what was displayed up on the screen, the beginnings of it, so...
David, could I ask you one question first before we go on? Is the column in the right, the number of tanks that are loaded waiting to be delivered?
Yeah, those are the number of loaded cars that are on hand for the, for that specific customer.
You know, as a follow-up question, would we have any idea how many tanks, the unloaded tanks, are just sitting around West Sacramento, waiting to leave the city? Because I know I've seen at times, blind stone, we have thirty, forty cars back there.
Yeah, there are numerous, you know, tanker cars that come into the city for various reasons. I want to make sure we point out that not all those cars, even though they may look similar, are destined for Buckeye. There are some distinctions that you can make, you know, between some of them. So we do have some cars that come in that are, they may look similar at first glance to the cars that are destined for Buckeye, but they actually have LPG, you know, in them. So, and I know the port does store, you know, some cars on its track as a revenue, you know, source. So, but these...
But these are actually just the loaded cars?
Well, and this is Buckeye-specific. This does not address any other cars coming in.
No, I understand. But, okay, thank you.
Good question. I actually didn't catch that. I assumed they were unloaded. So, are there any other questions of staff before I open up the public hearing? Mr. Chase?
Yeah, looking through the numbers, David, is there, there's certainly some clustering here. Is there any kind of a seasonality to the loading and unloading?
In my discussions with Buckeye, that was one of the questions I asked when I toured their facility on Monday, because I assumed this was related to how the fuels are adjusted, you know, through the winter and summer, and that is not the case with ethanol. This is a year-round operation. The blending of ethanol and the gasoline doesn't change, you know, seasonally.
Looks like through May and June is fairly low. June, very, you know, down to two tanker cars sitting there, and then it jumped to the twenties to the forties over several months. Anyway, just wondering.
Yeah, I was just, under the specific conditions, specifically number one, I mean, since that really kind of applies to the railroad itself, do we have the ability to even make that a condition?
Well, that is the condition that was placed on the project originally, and what we are regulating is the rail loading activity that occurs at this site. So, we are not in any way, shape, or form attempting to regulate, you know, UP. What we are doing is we are regulating this companies as a land use utilizing rail loading for their facility. Of course, the alternative would be that they would truck it in. So that, so we are looking at the, you know, landside rail loading activity is what the use permit is for.
But their siding is only six cars long, and that's, on that property is the only...
So, on their property, all they can accommodate in a given time is six cars, because that's just the length of their spur.
Okay. And then as far as the public safety thing, I might be wrong about this, but it would seem to me that the fire department could call the railroad dispatcher to have them clear the intersection in the event of an emergency.
Well, and, you know, it's our understanding from very recently that we have been able to get some improvements with terms of how they operate over there, particularly when traffic is starting to get backed up. But certainly in an emergency situation, you know, every second is important. And so, even though if the fire department were able to do that, that certainly is time. And we certainly aren't saying that Buckeye is the only one running rail, you know, activity through there. But it appeared to us, at least with this empirical data, that with the number of cars that are brought into the general area, which in UP stated so much, stated so much on the phone with us, that, you know, having, you know, a number of cars in the area does result in having to move a lot of them around all day long, that, you know, there is definitely, you know, times where they need to go back and forth across Fifteenth Street just to accomplish this sort of day-to-day activity over there in that, what they call the Westgate Yard, which really includes that entire area along Jefferson on the east side and actually up into the Bridge District. That whole entire stretch is kind of a linear yard, if you will, but it's all considered to be one large yard by UP. And UP owns that land.
Okay.
No more questions before I open up the public hearing? All right, at this point, I will open up the public hearing. I don't have any requests to speak from the members of the community, but the applicant is here to give a presentation. So if you can, give your name and...
Sure, and Mr. Chair, I'd also request, I have a short PowerPoint presentation, and will take a little bit longer, three minutes. I would request the, some additional time there. My name is Braden Chadwick, I'm a partner of Downey Brand, represent Buckeye Terminals. And hopefully, this presentation will be able to clarify some of the additional issues in the staff report. There was a letter that we sent in earlier today that you should have before you as well. So hopefully that clarifies things a little bit, too. First of all, we'd like to appreciate staff. We appreciate your city attorneys who've been helpful here as well, that we've spent time with over the last few months, working on this CUP extension. First of all, as the staff report states, Buckeye operates a fuel storage and mixing and distribution facility over there. You're probably all familiar with it or what it looks like anyway. It was previously operated by ARCO, was purchased by Buckeye in 2011. Now, they're a midstream petroleum company, which means that they essentially get gas, they mix it, and they send it on to the end user. So, and they are a longstanding company that operates nationally. I would basically just say, too, that the existing CUP allows for that, six cars per day. So the spur allows for six cars per day, that's how much room we have, but it also allows for six cars per day as a maximum under the conditional use permit that was previously approved since two thousand and two. And of course, that brings in ethanol, it's non-pressurized ethanol, so there's no chance of gigantic explosions or anything like that. It's required by California law as a gasoline additive to reduce air pollution, of course. And so, what happens essentially is that ethanol is mixed with gasoline that comes in by pipeline and then is sent out to the stations. Now, without the ability to receive this ethanol by rail, what would happen is that Buckeye would then have to truck it in, as Mr. Tilly pointed out, by tanker truck. And that would be roughly twenty to twenty-five trucks per day coming in on the surface streets. So this, from Buckeye's point of view, and I think from the cities as well, that using rail to bring in the ethanol to the facility is kind of mutually beneficial thing. It helps Buckeye, but it also helps the city and keep tanker trucks off of that area. Now, the overall terminal operation in the site is not subject to CUP. The CUP only deals with the rail deliveries. Now, the site operates independently, it's a vested site, and does not need a permit to operate from the city. So, this, again, we're talking about is just those six cars per day that are delivered by rail. Now, condition number two of the permit does require review by yourselves, planning commission, every year. And part of the problem and the reason why Buckeye is asking you for additional time under the CUP is that the one-year extension really handcuffs them regarding their business. What happens is they cannot then enter into a long-term contract, supply contracts with their customers, because there is this up-in-the-air, you know, cost differential between trucking it in and time periods of unloading, that type of stuff, versus rail and tanker cars. And so, this presents kind of an uncertainty from a business standpoint and from a contractual standpoint. It doesn't allow them to enter into long-term contracts with their customers. And so, that's why we're here with the five-year extension request. Now, the extension term, we just allow them to do that, and allow them to put them on equal footing with their competitors. Now, that's why they're requesting this five-year term. And at the end of the five-year term, the initial five-year term, what it does is, and this came out of discussions with staff, comes during the spring, it was, what it would give an initial five-year term, and then on the back end of that five-year term, the planning commission then would make the recommendation whether to extend the permit for another year, five years, three years, or whatever. But it still gives the flexibility on the back end that Buckeye and the city has requested as far as flexibility is concerned, given the planning issues and things that are out there. But it does allow Buckeye to enter into those long-term contracts that are so necessary for its business. So, the real big issue here, as Mr. Tilly pointed out, was the rail impacts at the Fifteenth Street Crossing. So, now, the question, of course, is these traffic impacts, do they have a real connection to Buckeye? And can we point to it? Now, the, how the facility works is because they're midstream, the customers actually order the rail cars from back east, and then they get shipped here and delivered to Buckeye. Buckeye has no control over the ordering, the shipping, only the delivery. And so, those rail cars are then shipped here, Union Pacific stages them in whatever way they want to, and then Union Pacific schedules a delivery during the time that the CUP allows. Now, Buckeye's rail operations, under its direct control, of course, are limited to unloading those six cars per day, five days a week from that rail spur. So, what's under Buckeye's control, they've maintained and they've never violated their permit or the conditions of their permit. So, the city has requested that Buckeye obtain data from Union Pacific to help them analyze the potential traffic impacts. And so, Buckeye spent literally months of time and thousands of dollars working with UP, and I'm sure it's no surprise to anyone here that that can be difficult or challenging at times to first get anyone's attention at UP, and second, get any information out of them, especially because Buckeye's not really their customer. But after a few months of time, after thousands of dollars spent, we were able to get some information from Union Pacific, and the information that Mr. Tilly's provided you with in the staff report, and some that you'll see in a graph I'm going to show you here in a second. And we... and some that you'll see in a graph I'm going to show you here in a second. And we actually, actually got Union Pacific, the local Union Pacific people, as well as national people back in Omaha, Nebraska, on the phone with the city at the same time, and actually trying to figure out what the city was requesting, and could UP provide that information to us, which, which they eventually were able to do in some form, though I don't think it's in the perfect form that everyone wanted it, at least it's information that, that we requested. So, Buckeye submitted this then, information to the city, and what it proves is that there's been no exceedance of Buckeye's permits of six cars per day. We've always been within the, the permit parameters. Shows that rail switches for Buckeye's six cars, and this is, I think, a key point here, roughly cause between only two and four crossings per day. So, there are a lot of cars out there, there are a lot of ethanol cars, not necessarily those that are just bound for Buckeye, there's others out there that UP stages for other places down, further down the line and elsewhere. But the rail switches for Buckeye's six cars only cause between two to four crossings per day. Now, the average closure rate, and again, I think this is very important, the average closure gate, this comes from the city's own data, shows that it'd be roughly two minutes of closed gate time, and can be as short as thirty seconds. Now, that, that can go on either direction of that, but the average is roughly around two minutes. So, you, you have anywhere from two to four crossings per day, and the average is roughly around two minutes, and it can be as short as thirty seconds, and can go over, over the two minutes as well. But I think it's important that we have two to four crossings, and it's thirty seconds to, you know, two minutes would be the average, of course, as far as the delay goes there on Fifteenth Street caused by Buckeye. Now, the rail impacts of the Fifteenth Street crossing, just to continue that frame, though the city requested that data, and we've provided most of it. And here is another issue here. Now, this comes from Buckeye's own facility. So, what happens, when the city came with their concerns, Buckeye tasked its staff to go out there and manually count what was out there. And you'll see here, if you can see, this details the rail yard total cars that were out there, the dates are on the far left column, and this goes, of course, from November sixteenth all the way to December third, so very, very recent. And you go here, you can see the, the switches that were made, and what times those switches were made at. So, you can see that they're not at peak traffic hours either. So, you have a switch at eleven o'clock, switch at eleven thirty, or sorry, one thirty at two o'clock, eleven thirty, eleven fifteen, eleven thirty, and so on. And so, what you see is the switches are not during peak traffic hours, they are anywhere from two to four per day, and they are from thirty seconds to, you know, roughly two minutes would be, would be the rough average, I think, of, of the number of the closures from the city's own data. So, the traffic impacts that are actually caused by Buckeye are not this, this dramatic or drastic traffic impacts where you're sitting at the, at the train crossing there for, for ten minutes, waiting for it to go during rush hour traffic. And that, and that has come, of course, through work with the city, work with Union Pacific, and of course Buckeye's requests with Union Pacific as to the, the time of delivery, and of course, the city's conditions that delivery should take place around these same times. So, I think it's important to point that out as well. So, the, the second question, and this goes to Mr. Tilly's comment also, is what's the connection between the actual number of rail cars that are staged for Buckeye that you see there, and the number of crossings on Fifteenth Street? So, that's, that's the other, I think, two big issues, and the number of rail crossings, the time it costs, but also the staging and the number of cars that are there. So, if I, this, this was in my letter to you today earlier, but what I think you can see here is this is, this is data overlaying, so you have the Union Pacific data, which is demonstrated by the dark blue line on the left-hand side, the Buckeye-specific data, where they went out and manually counted cars on the far-right-hand side of the blue line, then you have the city's gate closure data, that we got from the city, demonstrated by that pink line there that shows crossings. So, the things here that you can see, and I think this is, this is fairly dramatic, is that there's not a lot of correlation between the number of cars staged and the number of gate closings. In fact, we're, in many instances there, you can see that the number of gates crossings as they, as it's gone up dramatically, the downtick in the number of cars that are actually staged there for, for the Buckeye facility. So, there's really no correlation between, okay, well Buckeye received this many cars, and therefore the wait times or the gate crossings went dramatically up. Again, we're limited by how many cars we can have, and so you're, no matter how many cars are stacked there, we can only get six per day. And I think this is, this kind of demonstrates that, based on the city's own data, that the delivery and even the stacking of rail cars that Union Pacific does, doesn't necessarily affect how many times the gate closes or how long the gate closes. So, here's a, a map that you can see, and it just comes from Google Earth, and you can see the, the facility there, the Buckeye facility there, as, as it comes in, you can see the rail line come and then swerve to your left there. And what I'd like to, to point out is, as you can see the rail line come out, you can see that there are many drop-off points past where Buckeye's facility and Buckeye's terminal is. Buckeye's terminal is, there's a little mark there, I don't think I have a laser pointer, but, oh wait, here we go, right about there. So, you have the Buckeye terminal, and you can see the rail line coming down, and you can see how it comes, and you can see where you can have various drop-off points, and there are cars and deliveries that come all the way back through all this area that's much, that's further past Buckeye's terminal. And so, if we want to go back to the previous screen, what we have is right there, that if Buckeye's has, as far as gate crossings, you have between two and four per day, and you have some great crossings there, you see where you have as many as thirty-four or thirty-five. Those have to come from somewhere, and there are other customers down the line, of course, that, that occasion those, those crossings and trigger those gates. So, again, Buckeye's role in all of this, I think, is rather small. Now, what this, what this is going to show you is, this, again, goes back to what Mr. Tilly was pointing out, was that there are a lot of tanker trucks out there that look very, very similar. And a lot of people might think that this, well, that must be the ethanol tanker trucks, those are stacked, that are stacked right there by the Buckeye facility, they are carrying some sort of liquid, and, and they look just like the, the trucks that park at Buckeye's facility. But if you take a little closer look, you have liquefied petroleum gas, and this, and this, Mr. Tilly saw in his site visit as well, that a lot of these things that are stacked there, and sometimes in greater number, are not destined for the Buckeye facility. In fact, obviously, it's not ethanol, that's, that's LPG. And those are delivered further down the line, but they're stacked in that same area. And so, these are not moved to deliver the cars to Buckeye, but they are stored by UP all over the place. But, again, these are not what, what happens at the Buckeye facility. And again, here's another view of that, near the, the residential area there, and again, these are not Buckeye tanker trucks. This is a picture of one that is Buckeye, and you can tell by the, up there, you can see that it has, and this is kind of the telltale thing of where you can tell if it is a Buckeye ethanol truck or not, is you have, the, the top area right there is different. So, I guess, I, I say all that to say this, is that there are reasons for approving the extension of this permit. There's a longer CUP term will add to, allow Buckeye to enter into these long-term contracts for gas delivery. The rail delivery versus the truck delivery, want to keep those trucks off of the city streets. And if we're really concerned about traffic, we shouldn't be concerned about two to four gate closings per day of thirty seconds to two minutes. We should probably be concerned more about the twenty-five tanker trucks that would be on the street if we didn't approve this. And I think, again, this is mutually beneficial for the city as well as Buckeye. And the impacts at Fifteenth Street are not related to Buckeye's six cars per day. And that's borne out by the data that, that you've seen there in the charts. So, again, we didn't make that up, the data came from Union Pacific, it came from manual car counts, and it came from the city itself. And so, through Buckeye's efforts, Union Pacific has also, I think, and again, working with the city, we've been able to work with UP to actually get them to concede that, you know what, if, if the city thinks it would be more beneficial to have deliveries at different times, that UP would be willing to work with both us and the city to do so. And so far, the city hasn't made that request. We have brought it up with the city, and they said they want to get back to us. But, again, I think there's a way to, to solve all the problems here, if, if there really are any. But I think by just saying, hey, there's been a lot of traffic in the area, and there's been a lot of gate closures, we're really worried about that, what you see from the actual data that comes from the city itself and from Union Pacific, it's not from Buckeye's facility, and it's not from Buckeye's deliveries. So, while we, we know that, that traffic's a major concern, and we know that the rail yard and railroad crossings are major concerns from the city, we make no bones about that. We just question whether they're from our facility or not, and the data suggests otherwise. But, you know, as, as kind of a nod to the, to the city, and again, we've been working with, with staff for quite a few months on this with Mr. Tilly, speaking with my clients before the hearing, what they've, what they've asked me to ask you is, even though that they have applied for a five-year extension, given the city's concerns, they have asked if there's a middle ground. And so, what they've asked me to ask you is, instead of the five-year term, Buckeye says that they'd be, that they would be willing to lower their request to, to three years to address some of the city's concerns, so that the city can be, feel comfortable that there'd be, you know, additional data gathering, that if that's what, that, that they need, that we can work with them, but also takes care of Buckeye's needs from a business perspective. And so, I think that the, the middle ground here to, to kind of accommodate kind of both points of view would be for a three-year extension as opposed to a five-year extension. So, again, I'm available, and we have company representatives here available to answer any operational questions that you might have. And we thank you for your time, and, and if there's any questions, feel free to call any one of us back up, we can answer those for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick. Bringing it back to, to the commission, I do, I do not have any requests from the public to speak. So, bringing it back to the commission, however, I am going to leave the public hearing open once more, just in case. And so, I'm gonna start with Mr. Chase, who has a question or comments?
Yeah, I have a question for our staff, for David, actually. What is the city's position? I know we've been, I think, going back and forth between one year and a five year. Is the city, the staff have a position on anything in between, be it three, two, or the other?
Our recommendation is, is still, remains the other one year to your commission tonight, as outlined in the staff report, and also as the commission has previously, you know, directed this applicant and the prior owner, you know, to do so. That was the case when the Buckeye Company acquired, you know, this facility, so that was a known condition at that time. And, you know, as it was from when the project was very first approved back in 2002, and one, you know, important piece of this remains, you know, true, you know, here ten years later. And that's that this is a non-conforming facility, and the whole area is non-conforming, and the whole reason why the commission put a time limit on the use permit in the very first place and has maintained that over the years, is that knowing that this area was going to transition, and 2002, that transition, and perhaps even in 2005, that transition, you know, seemed a ways away. Well, here now in 2012, and at the beginning of 2013, that transition is not just in the, in the future, it's, it's happening. And so, we would continue to request this be reviewed on an annual basis, and as we evaluate the transitions that are occurring in the area, determine on an annual basis as to whether or not this, this use permit should remain, you know, in effect, or should it no longer be extended.
Actually, we'll call you back up if there's specific questions.
Okay, and if I, if, if so pleases the chair, I'd, I'd like to respond to that, too, if, if I get a chance.
If, if there's a, if there's a desire, thank you. Chair, wanna go last?
I don't care. I can go last.
Okay. Mr. Olson, do you have any comments, questions?
No.
My, my question had, had to do with the timeframe as well, so it's been addressed by Mr. Tilly.
Back to you.
Well, I know you've got a lot more questions than I do. But, you know, actually, I, if you just ask Buckeye, I mean, are, are you using all the product that comes to that terminal for yourself, or are you still selling it across the river to the people in Sacramento?
I'd have to ask the, the operational guys as to where the destination, is that, is that the question, where the destination of the, of the mixed product goes?
It's not all used at Arco, it wasn't in the past, is it now? Is all the product used at your terminal? That got him looking, huh?
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure, but, and this is Andy Anderson, he can, he's the operations guy, and he can help you with that.
Mr. Anderson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The majority of the product at our terminals is owned by Arco BP. We do have other third-party customers in our facility to load gasoline for other, for other customers.
But then my question would be, is all the ethanol used at your terminal? Because in the past, when we originally did this, it came in and you loaded trucks out and went across the river to-
Yeah, we, we don't do that. All the ethanol that we use is used at our terminal, that's correct.
And you're using, are you using all six tank cars a day?
Not currently, no. We use, it depends on the throughput of the facility.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
What's the mixture?
Ten percent.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well-
I had more of a procedural question. I mean, can we extend it to three years if we wanted to tonight?
If, I think I can answer that question, but if you were the attorney, I can, I can point over to Lola.
Yes, you may.
Who I can't see.
We know she's down there, we just don't know where.
I hear the noise. And getting to Mr. Chase's comment earlier, I, I'm willing to be a little bit flexible on, on this, not entirely flexible. In my, just as a personal comment, I'd be willing to go for two years. I know that is consistent with some recent discussions that the commission has made in this, on, in the same area, not with this applicant, but in the same area. And as far as my other comments go, I do believe mitigated negative deck is still appropriate. It is, it is the time that's an issue here, the one to five years. And it is because, as David pointed out, the progress that is being made. The, the new bridge on South River Road looks like it is going forward. That will add traffic to South River Road, which will probably spawn additional development along the waterfront. That's more of my concern, it's, it's not necessarily the rail stacking. I know that crossings are, are a concern for that area. But as far as the zoning goes, it's that interaction with the approved use for that area, which is waterfront. And this is not a currently zoned use for that. But I do understand the importance of it, and I do, I do not think that we're going to be developing this in next year either. But I, I do want to monitor the progress, and I think two-year is an appropriate term. That's just my comment.
Have we closed the public hearing?
We have not yet, but if there's no more comments or questions-
I didn't know if you wanted to make a comment before we did. No, I didn't. Chadwick did, didn't he? Did you want to make a comment before we closed the public hearing?
He wanted to address-
Yes, something about Tilly.
Okay, Mr., okay, Mr. Moore wants to hear it.
Okay, my, my only comment was, was that, given the changing area of the, you know, this, this CUP only, only governs rail, it's, it's legal non-conforming use. And so, by not extending the CUP or extending the CUP doesn't, doesn't change a whole lot out there as far as the, the actual facility itself, it just determines how the ethanol gets there, that's all. And so, if, if, obviously, the, there's been, there's been some discussion with, with staff as to whether, how, and, and otherwise to deal with that issue as far as alternate locations, and how much it's going to cost, and how that gets handled or whatever. But I think that, that might be the, the separate discussion that we have in the future as to, between the city and, and Buckeye and the facility. That, that's all. Thank you.
Which I think everybody's aware of, but that did remind me, though, I wanted to make sure that the applicant was aware, there is an existing mitigation measure, and I'm not sure of the status of it, but it is still a condition of this report, of this permit that carries forward. And that is that the proposed projects shall participate in the West Sacramento Rail Relocation Plan. There's a whole bunch that goes along with that. I'm not sure what the status is of, of that plan. But if it should, should come up, I just want to remind the applicant that that, that is still, that is still a condition on that permit. So, actually, I don't want to close, wait, at this point, I'm sorry, going to close the public hearing. I would like to bring it back to the commission for further deliberation. It sounds like we have some various ideas on the table, and would like to try and get a consensus before we pull a motion. Mr. Chase?
I think, well, I, I fully understand the, the applicant's desire for predictability, you know, consistency, totally understand that. By the same token, I think the, the irony is that we, as a city, need that also level of predictability and the option of being able to respond to changing market conditions. So, I think either side is looking for something that provides the, you know, the, the best scenario for each, and, and I think we need to look out for the best interest of the city as much as possible. I think that's clearly our, what we're here to do. That said, I, I am willing to entertain, and I think I would agree, you know, a, an in-between, and I'm inclined to go for a two-year, if not a three-year, adding a little bit there, but I think also- gonna happen within the next year, I'd feel comfortable adding that, that time period, the extension to two years.
Mr. Moore, let's go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have to agree with what both of you are saying. I mean, my actual comment is, I can't see why we need to go past one year, but knowing how the economy is, it's probably gonna be a couple of years before we really see our building take off. That being said, of course, at the end of two years, I wouldn't be surprised that that rail spur is not used anymore. I hope that we're building so much out there that we have to say, I'm sorry, we can't go, but you never know. But I couldn't go past two, two would be just stretching it to the max, I think.
Ms. Cindy?
Mr. Tilly, would you mind sharing with us the conflict if it was a two-year, as we're contemplating up here? Is there a major conflict or minor conflict?
Well, you know, we know what we have on the immediate horizon for, you know, this next year in 2013. You know, the Bridge Housing Project will break ground, it's already been in a couple rounds of plan check. And then also, we're expecting this, also this month, another developer to submit plans for several apartment buildings and townhomes surrounding the new park in the Bridge District. So those are projects that will be well under construction, you know, next year, possibly some occupancy by the end of next year, depending on when they get started. Certainly by 2014, you know, you will have numerous residents in the Bridge District, you know, just north of this area. And additionally, I think as Commissioner Leibig mentioned, and it was just announced, I believe, today, some of the city's Prop 1B funding was proved to be reallocated to construct the South River Road Bridge, so which, when that would occur with likely design this year and also in 2014 to start down construction, when that becomes operational, you'll have, suddenly have numerous, you know, persons, you know, coming to and from, you know, Southport through this area, which currently would be on Jefferson Boulevard. So, you know, we do believe that this area and by extension, you know, Pioneer Bluff, the changes will definitely start to become very real, you know, in 2013 and certainly by 2014 without a doubt. So we would, we certainly would support the commission if it wishes to go to a two-year horizon, but our recommendation is to remain at one year at this time.
Mr. Olson?
I appreciate the willingness to come down to a three-year agreement, I think that was, I think that would be fair, but yeah, I'm willing to go down to a two from there, too, I guess.
I'm sorry, Jeremy.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the willingness to compromise and go down to a three-year agreement from the original five that they requested.
Seems that we're actually right between two and three. I'm mostly comfortable with the two, but that's, that's just me. Is there anybody uncomfortable with the two? Should go three and vice versa. I'm uncomfortable with three, I am definitely uncomfortable with three. So I would prefer to go two at a maximum.
I am also uncomfortable with three, I'd prefer to go one, but I would go two.
I think we have a consensus. If there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion. The motion has to include the change of condition for number two, if there is a change of condition.
Mr. Chairman, if their commission was to wish to go to two years at this time, would also, would after the two years, would at this point at least, would go back to annual after that? Would that be the commission's desire, at least at this time?
Yes, I see nodding.
And in that case, then for condition number two, all you would need to do would be to change the 2013 date to 2014 and the rest of it could remain the same if you were to go, wish to go to two years at this time. If that was the commission's desire, we would ask that we made part of the motion.
Mr. Leibig, that would be my motion to do the staff recommendation, changing 2013 to 2014 in condition two.
Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Chase. All in favor with that change, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes for a two-year. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
That is the end of number three. Next item is number four. Before we start with number four, number four began with a workshop outside of the council chambers. I'd like to...
Commissioner Leibig, we...
Are we not there yet?
We have the, we're on the item with the parcel map at this time.
I wrote, take a recess on the wrong line.
We still would like a brief recess after this item, however.
After this one, okay. So next is, let me get my papers in order, item number four, which is a public hearing regarding the West Capitol Commons tentative map, number 5021. And Mr. Bermudez?
Hello, Chairman Leibig, how you doing? Commission members, how you doing? Tonight we're here, excuse me, wrong slide there Cindy, do we need the map up, please? Anyways, tonight we're here for a public hearing on a tentative parcel map. This is for the West Capitol Commons project. And as the commission may recall, back in June of this year, staff brought forward a design review of approval for this project. This was part, and is part of what is considered the Rayleigh's Landing project and it used to be the Washington Street, identified in that particular Rayleigh's Landing project as a Washington Street property. Since then, a particular developer has acquired the property and moved forward and, as I mentioned, brought before the commission and city council designs for this particular project and those were approved in June and July. What we're trying to do here with this particular project right now in the map is, as you see before the map in front of you, there are essentially 32 parcels on this particular property. And in the scheme of planning and building, we cannot have a multitude of parcels lines running through a development project. So what this map will do, will clean up per se the underlying parcels and remove them and will create a 7.5 acre parcel. In addition, what it will do is will also abandon Fourth Street and Fourth Street will be abandoned. It will be, infrastructure will still be, remain public, but it will be a private roadway in the gray areas segmented there. And, you know, for the residents that are just north of the property, it will still remain a public component up to the center line of the roadway there. So with this action, there will be an abandonment of the roadway. As I mentioned, this project was previously approved in design review several months ago and so this completes kind of the end of the planning process and as staff or the commission is aware, this project is currently undergoing some grading and site improvements. So staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the requested tentative map, subject to the conditions and findings within the staff report. Thank you. The developer is here and his engineer, if you have any questions. I did not get a sense that they had a presentation unless there were some questions that you needed verified regarding the map. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thanks.
At this time, I will open the public hearing if there's no presentation. I will, however, ask staff, or ask the commission if there are any questions of staff prior to opening or prior to asking the community. Jim, I have one. The, I was a little confused about the parcels and where the resultant parcel was and phasing. The resultant parcel is all of Phase One and all of Phase Two combined?
No, it's all of Phase One.
It is just all of Phase One.
That is correct.
Can you show me on the map where that line is? I'm just not seeing it.
Sure, looks a little blurry there, hold on a minute. There we go. Essentially, the property line would run along that dash boundary line there. This phase, this, all of West Capitol, the remnant that's there along with the Tower Bridge Gateway, which you seen previously for the Phase Two, would be intact and would have to, you know, undergo, undergo some type of, you know, land or subdivision at a future date when we get to a Phase Two. So the property boundary runs along West Capitol in this area here.
Thank you. It was that, that item which actually made me concerned, in fact, that we don't have the land.
Sure.
That's a good question, Jim. That just brought up a question. I thought part of Phase Two was up on that northerly section also.
It is, it is. Oh, on, oh, on the northerly section, I'm sorry. No, no, no.
Yeah, it was, there was a, the, what do you call it, the clubhouse, swimming pool area was all part of Phase Two.
Thank you.
And it was up in that area, so that really wouldn't be correct, is it?
Thank you for pointing that out. Let me clarify.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause the design that the planning commission reviewed at the time, back in June, did include indeed a Phase Two at a later, at a later stage, as characterized by Commissioner Moore. But when the project advanced to the city council, there was a commitment by the developer to integrate the clubhouse into the Phase One scheme and plan instead of the Phase Two. So he basically pulled the clubhouse and the amenities out of the Phase Two. So thank you for asking that.
That's a memory, huh?
No comment.
Okay, fine.
Okay, if there are no other questions of staff, the public hearing is open and I, Mr. Chase?
If I could, a quick question. And this did come up, perhaps I didn't know enough to ask it at the time of our prior commission hearing, but there's a row of trees and I'm assuming, are they within that West Capitol, the right-of-way at this point in time and are they to remain or to be taken out?
The row of trees you're referring to is in the West Capitol right-of-way or the TBG right-of-way, however you look at that, and those are sycamore trees. And as far as removal, those are not contemplated with this action or even the Phase One design that's ongoing right now. That'll be a future date, a future discussion, a future tree permit if they indeed want to remove the trees.
Thank you. We'll have a future question on that. Okay, public hearing, I do have one request to speak. Mickey Fawcett, and please correct me if I got your name wrong.
Perfect. You got Mickey right, like a Mickey Mouse and faucet, like a water faucet, so that's close. I'm here just briefly to ask a question, I have some concerns, or a, yeah, a couple concerns on history and artifacts. And I realize that there are certain SEQA requirements that all findings will be disclosed if there's any findings in these project areas. And so I want to briefly discuss that, that, this is going back to when Calsters was built over on Second, Second Street, Third Street, up to the levee, E and F, out of that whole project. And I understand that part of that area had been disturbed by levee work back in 1911. So, but out of that whole project, two boxes of broken bottles was all, as far as I'm aware of, that's all that was ever turned over by the construction people. So to me, I'm wondering, is SEQA, or is somebody monitoring this or are they, is somebody not doing what they're supposed to be doing? It seems like there'd be a lot more found than that. That area there specifically was, the area where Margaret McDowell, you know, the founder of Broderick or Washington was. So I guess that's one of my concerns, is SEQA really being followed, are people being called in? And then my other concern is the area of G Street, between Fourth Street and Third Street, specifically to this project. The map shows a, along G Street on the south side, a pedestrian easement, and then on the southeast corner of Fourth Street, it shows a proposed water easement. And that area specifically, right there, has my concern, 'cause historically, it's, use the word virgin, I mean, it hasn't been dug down in deep or anything. All the rest of that was probably excavated, you know, back in the 30s when they put the underpass in at Welcome Grove and took out the underpass at Fifth Street and the Old Lincoln Highway. So that area had been dug down deep and everything, but you get right up to that corner that I mentioned and it's, a lot can be found there and I've been told there's interesting things there. So how can we be assured that people are doing what they're supposed to be doing as far as SEQA and reporting what they're finding? I did call the planning department last week, early last week, and I have yet to hear from them on who to talk to about that project. So that's, that's basically, that is my concerns. There's history there and I'm, even current history, for people that are familiar with that Broderick area, probably the first shopping center in Sacramento, shopping mall, was put in there by a guy named Albert Benetti. He had the Chinese lounge, I'm sorry, the tower, the tower, like cafe soda fountain and later on became the, I think it was called the Tower of Baton Tackle. So I mean, in, there's fine stuff from that, we'd like to take a look at it. You know, those artifacts, but yet when I hear that there's something as big as Calsters, two boxes of broken bottles, and that's where Margaret McDowell lived, and I know they went down 10 feet, you know, and they didn't get any more, so can we watch this, this area here?
I'm gonna have, actually, Mr. Tilly answer your question specifically because you brought up SEQA and hopefully he can answer, ask if you'd like to sit down, you're more than welcome to, regarding traditional cultural properties and construction monitoring cultural resources. I know that there are often requirements for construction monitoring, but this whole area was covered, I believe, in a larger environmental review, which included historical artifacts.
Yeah, you know, initially, when the Rayleigh's Landing was approved in 2006, it included an environmental impact report. In that environmental impact report, it did look at cultural resources. In that section of the cultural resources, it did identify the historical background and characterize prior pass uses and building structures on particular properties. And how SEQA works is, indeed, there is, in some cases, monitoring of the site, depending on your grading, depending on your depth of digging. And in this case, for this, for the Rayleigh's Landing as a whole, there is a requirement that when there is trenching and digging of reasonable digging amount, that there is supposed to be a monitor, some type of geologist or somebody that's, can monitor. And that is actually going on as we speak in relation to what is going on at the project site right now with the grading. There, you know, is some key specific mitigation when it comes to cultural resources as in Native American, you know, artifacts. There's, you know, shutdowns of sites, there's, you know, calling, you know, the county officials, calling, you know, the native tribal groups within the area and the region. And if that does occur based on the monitoring, that does happen. In relation to bottles and just small type of artifacts, you know, the mitigation doesn't go that far in detail to say, when you find a bottle or you find a, you know, whatever it may be, that you have to shut down the site. It just says that there may be that and it contemplates that. But it does ensure in the mitigation that when you do dig and you do trench, that there'll be somebody on site that can verify basically the integrity in the date and, you know, the significance of the find and determine if there has to be a protocol followed to go to another phase of review. What we did with the Calster site, 'cause I did monitor that and that was my project, is we did have the same kind of monitoring system and the individual monitor at that site did work with the historic... at that site did work with the Historic Society. And my understanding is there was, you know, some finds of material that were passed on to the Historic Society. I'm sure the developer is here, he, you know, I don't think there would be a problem. Seems like, you know, he would be willing to do that if there is some kind of find of bottles or anything like that, that he could pass that on. I don't think that would be a problem. So, we are monitoring the site, and it is per the mitigation within the environmental impact report. In regards to the water easement, and I was a little unclear if it was a question about, just in relation to the easement that's identified as it relates to artifacts being found, or if just, it's more of a technical question regarding the water easement. And I do have the project engineer here from the developer that maybe can shed some light of what exactly does that mean for that area. But, if they do any trenching, as I said, and they do any finds, there, you know, will be protocols followed for something significant as, you know, artifacts related to native, you know, Indian heritage type of artifacts. But, for some of that other type of material, it's just more collected and processed depending on the instruction based on the monitor. So, if we want to ask, I think that's what he was asking, I was a little unclear.
Oh, thank you.
About that easement.
Just one more clarification. Thank you. Very complete. As far as handing artifacts over to the, to the public, there's some sensitivities about that, around that as well. And not all artifacts actually get reported to the public for protection purposes. So, just a side note on that. And regarding that, that water easement, was your, your question was regarding trenching, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
If, if it was just a possible place where...
Sure.
I have another response.
For that. Can you respond after the meeting? If, if that's...
I just wanted to clarify there, that I mentioned...
I need, actually, I need to stop you. Because this is televised, televised, and because you're not on mic, nobody actually can hear you. So...
No, I...
Let's, let's do a follow-up after the meeting, if you wouldn't mind for that. Thank you very much. And the velper is in the room, so I'm happy that he got to hear your comments as well. And hopefully, we'll have your contact information. Okay. With that, moving on again, I'm going to keep the public hearing open, and it's Mr. Moore's job tonight to remind me to close it.
Close the public hearing.
You want to close it? There are no questions of the applicant? Okay. I will close the public hearing. Thank you. Bring it back for deliberation.
I make a motion that we certify the recommended action.
Are there, I want to pause just one second and make sure that there are no comments prior to us moving forward.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mrs., Ms. Sandin. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none? Passes.
And the appeal procedures, that any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission's matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 10 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. So, at this time, we would request a brief recess to be able to set up for our final item for the evening.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
About when this may come back or not to the commission? Is it, this will not come back until we reach Phase Two next, correct? Or does it even come back at that point?
It will, it likely will depend on what is needed at that time to implement Phase Two. I don't know that we know entirely at this point. Certainly, if there is another parcel map, for example, that would come to the commission.
Okay.
But I don't know that there will be one either at this stage.
Okay. If there's a, there is a mention of contemplation in, in the document, and you and I can possibly just follow up after that, and it has to do with Phase Two. So, okay, at this point, I'm sorry, how long did you request for a recess? Five minutes?
Five minutes, please.
Okay. I will take a five-minute request, recess, and get back together at 8:45.
Seven.
Thank you. Getting back on to the agenda, we're at item number five, which is, it's not a hearing, this is just presentation and discussion regarding the Local Government Commission Infill Streamline Program Grant for Master Planning, that's a big title, of the Grand Gateway Project area. And this is going to be Jim, Jim again.
Yeah, Jim is gonna start the presentation, then we will hear from our consultant, and then Jim will be back at the end to close it out, and then we'll be seeking your comments and those from the members of the community.
Yep. Thanks, David. Just real quick, our consultant group is Opticos, they are from Berkeley. Chris Jensen will be the presenter today, and we'll be working kind of back and forth. As David mentioned, we really want to see what the council, or sorry, the commission thinks about this particular master planning effort. And I think, you know, to point out, you know, from the get-go too, is that it will be returning in January. We're under certain grant conditions, so it will be returning to Planning Commission in January for a formal recommendation to the City Council. So, we really want to hear your comments, and, and I will try to make the presentation go a little bit quicker than what we planned, in addition, based on the time. But, if the commission has any comments that may come up after this presentation, feel free to call me, email me, and we can integrate those into where we go next with this particular effort. And first thing off, I would like to, one, commend the public for attending the workshop that was held at 5:30. It was great to see a good turnout, and I would like to let them know that we greatly appreciate them for hanging out and want to thank them for hanging to wait for this presentation. So, the Grand Gateway may be a new kind of word to everybody. Everybody's wondering, where's the Grand Gateway? And, you know, us redevelopment, old redevelopment people come up with these catchy kind of names. Well, the Grand Gateway basically is, which is not moving now, there we go, is this location there in red. And as you guys may recall, it's at the, kind of more or less now, it's just sort of the terminus of West Capitol Avenue. It intersects with, which is, what is it, Grant, as well as it does incorporate what many of you know as the old Experience Motel Site, and then transfers over and includes Delta Lane and Tower Court portion there. I think to start off, one thing that we wanted to kind of get into, and is, I, I won't cover basis how we got to Grant, because I think I covered that in the staff report. Basically, it's, you know, through the Local Government Commission and the grant process through their infill streamlining program, which is part of the Sacramento Equality District. So, I'll kind of leave that detail out, but with their funds, we were able to retain Opticos and look at some master planning for this keynote in the city. I think one of the challenges you have to recognize with this particular area is that there's three planning documents that guide this location. You've got the Washington Specific Plan, Bridge District Specific Plan, and the West Capitol Avenue Action Plan, and those are all highlighted there. So, with that, you know, what we're trying to do is kind of, in some sense, see what those particular plans can do. And there, there is, you know, identified the old Experience, the Tower Court, and the Delta Lane site. So, what we wanted to do with this effort is come up with kind of a master plan for this area. And rather than wait till a developer shows up and we have some kind of project planned, let's say, for the Tower Court project, and I think, you know, the commission's familiar with how this works, where they will propose a development concept, and next thing you know, they want to do some modifications to development standards, and we include some funky called PD whatever on top of it, and we get out of that a unique kind of good quality design. Well, in this case, we have an opportunity here with the grant funds to get ahead of that. And that's part of the effort with working with our consultants and the grant funds, is to basically master plan this, get out ahead, get, look at the site, and kind of bring, and, and develop a plan that gives us a lot of flexibility, significant utility, and kind of responds to the market conditions, so that when a developer wants to come and develop this site, which is city-owned property, we will have a plan, and we can give them, instead of processing a PD through the Planning Commission, we can basically say, here's this Grand Gateway Master Plan that we completed recently, here are some details from that plan, this is what we think best fits and what's suitable for this particular property. And I apologize, I'm having difficulty with this. There we go. So, what you see in front of you is, we did this intentionally, and the reason we did it is because it represents Washington Specific Plan, West Capitol Avenue Design Guidelines, Bridge District Specific Plan. So, guess what? If we didn't do this master planning effort, David, myself, all the planning crew would have to determine, how does this all fit for this planning effort? And that's a lot of detail. There's vision statements, there's goals, there's land use, there's design elements. And basically, as I said, what is this effort about? It's the end game, as you see, to get to the Grand Gateway Master Plan, develop a plan that integrates all this vision goals, land use schemes and design into a functional, maximum utility type of document for future potential development. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Chris, and he'll get started kind of on some of the background information that led to where we're going with this particular grant. Let me just say too, ultimately, what we want to do is get to that end planning document, and that's the document that I mentioned will be coming back... that's the document that I mentioned we'll be coming back with in January.
Thank you. Um, before we get into some of the framework plans, um, that were looked at, I wanted to talk about, about some of the background analysis that we did looking at the site. So we aren't really coming in and just proposing some options, we really did some background analysis to see, um, how the site really plays into the bigger role. From the analysis package, I believe the whole package was included in the staff report. Um, I pulled a few of the images out specifically to highlight. Um, the first is the street network. Um, we looked at the street network, the street network providing not only connectivity for vehicles, but this is how people walk, this is how bicycles would travel through the site. Um, you notice the site does have one connection piece here for the continuation of West Capitol that comes through the site. Um, other than that, it actually is part of a rather large block. Um, so there is actually fairly little connectivity through this site. From that, we actually also wanted to look at connectivity and barriers, identifying the barriers that are for people accessing the site. Um, here we're identifying the railroad, and then also the points that people are then accessing the site through these barriers, um, the underpass that is at the extension of West Capitol, and then also the underpass that is on Tower Bridge Gateway. Um, from looking at this map, we identified that there was a large area of this northeast neighborhood that actually their access point to this site really is through that underpass of, of the gateway. So if someone was living here and they wanted to walk to the site, they would be walking through that underpass. We also looked at where people would be walking to and coming from. Um, the dot, the first dashed line in the circle, the smaller one, represents a quarter mile. Um, that's about a ten-minute walk, that's generally in, um, planning terms, how far someone's comfortable walking. The second one is a half-mile. A half-mile is a distance if it's a pleasant walk. Um, also, it's very easy for someone who would jump on a bicycle to get to a destination. So we were looking at a half-mile from various locations as far as the civic center, from Raleigh Field, um, from the post office, from the schools, and then also this map shows where the current bicycle routes are that run through the site. Uh, from that, um, we generated a very quick diagram. Um, this was kind of influencing what we were looking at, identifying where the access point is. Um, we also identified some view corridors. Um, this site becomes a termination as one is traveling east on West Capitol, and then also it marks an arrival point, um, down at the intersection with Tower Bridge Gateway. And then looking at how do we provide access to the, the triangle site up in the corner, as well as how this site could potentially be broken up into blocks. From our analysis, we developed a series of four planning objectives. Um, these were the things that we tried to focus on in these framework plans. Uh, for first being determining and locating the focus of the commercial activity. Um, if we're gonna put commercial on this site, where should it go? Uh, the second, determining the terminus of the West Capitol Avenue View Corridor, how does that, that view corridor terminate onto this site? Resolving the West Capitol Avenue connection, um, the extension that, West Capitol Avenue that runs through the site, um, how is that dealt with? And then lastly, determining the role of civic space on the site. When we looked at our analysis as well, within that quarter-mile and half-mile radius, there wasn't a lot of public space as far as somebody that who could come and find a place for coffee, or sit down and read a newspaper. So looking at a way that if we integrate graded civic space on the site, where would be a good location to put it? From those, we developed three framework plans that looked at different ways that they could be addressed. Um, I'm gonna go through each of those three options. For each of these three options, we're gonna talk and show a street and block network, an illustrative plan, a land use diagram, and then a perspective rendering of what we kind of see as the key, the key feature is. Um, our intention for these framework plans is really to facilitate a discussion, um, as to how these different issues can be addressed, and what people's preference is for how they would be addressed. The first option is Option A. Um, talking about what we do with the extension of West Capitol, this leaves the street in its existing location, however, it puts it around a civic space. Um, the idea there would be to slow down the, the speed of the vehicle somewhat. On-site, we noticed that that connection piece was often used as a bypass, vehicles would use that to bypass the signalized intersection. Um, so we were looking at a way that we could actually slow down traffic through there. So this maintains a fairly straightforward vehicle connection, but also introduces a park in that area to try and slow down the speeds. Um, this is the illustrative plan that we drew. Um, again, here showing the civic space and how that could be a, a key element to the community that would be developed there. Um, also looking at how the view corridor would be terminated. Um, this view corridor coming down West Capitol would get a glimpse of the civic space, and then also have some building, building on the corner. Looking at the general land use, um, the red areas are where we would be targeting for commercial. The orange areas is what we were calling flex. Um, I will describe flex in a little more, more detail with some images for what that could look like. The concept of the flex space is, ideally, this would all be ground floor commercial with people, a busy destination. Um, however, with the market, we're not sure that it can actually support that much ground floor commercial in the short term. So the idea would be to identify a location where it makes sense to target the ground floor commercial in the short term, but then also identify additional areas where there could be flex space, or space that could evolve over time. Um, I'll show a few examples of what that frontage type could look like, but it could be something in the short term, it might be a residential, residential on the ground floor, it might be a home office, um, it could be a live-work unit, or it could even be a combination of those uses along that area. So, one other additional comment on the, the use plan, the thing, another thing we were looking to identify is if there is a high intensity development that would require structured parking, where could structured parking go on this, in the different frameworks? Um, so on this one, we actually looked at sizing a block here on the corner that could accommodate structured parking. The last, the perspective here that we're showing is of what this green civic space could look like, um, as you're coming down West Capitol. Um, we see that as really being one of the key elements to this approach. Option B, on the street and block framework, uh, the extension of West Capitol is realigned, and the intent here is that it would not be a straight, a straight shot through to the, as a bypass. Um, we would introduce a small public space at the back. This public space would be focused primarily towards the residential units on the back, and it would still allow vehicular traffic, but it would be much more indirect, and probably less convenient for someone to use the street as a bypass, and would become more of a, a neighborhood street, and that could also still provide some connection vehically for, to the neighborhoods to the north and east. For the illustrative plan, the open space that we are proposing would be in the form of a plaza here at the end, as well as this small green open space in the back focused towards the residential uses. Um, from a land use point, we were looking in this scheme to really try and study what it might look like if we focused the commercial and flex space at the perimeter along the primary streets. Um, here, keeping the commercial along Capitol, Rand, and then Tower Bridge Gateway. Um, again, here on this one, we located the corner, made the corner block big enough to locate a structured parking in that location. For this one, we generated two perspectives. The first, actually looking at what this plaza space could feel like, and then the second for what this back residential green could feel like. Uh, the first being the, the commercial, commercial public plaza, and the second being this, this green in the back with townhouses lining the green. Uh, Option C, for this street flat network, we actually closed off the connection through, through the underpass there for vehicles. Um, it would maintain bicycle and pedestrian connection, but we wanted to put forward an option that actually looked at whether that connection was still necessary for vehicles to come through for discussion. Um, this one, we also locate the public space more towards the corner, and then create a pedestrian passeo that would then highlight that pedestrian connection under, under the railroad track. In this option, the commercial activity is focused towards that corner, but we do get additional flex space that could function along that pedestrian passage leading to the underpass. In this one, looking for a location for the structured parking, because of this pedestrian passeo, it becomes difficult to locate parking closer to the corner. So we actually proposed putting a parking structure up in the, the northwest corner of the site that actually is, in all the schemes, it's a little inefficient to develop a triangle up there. So we actually looked at putting, putting a parking structure in that location. The perspective image that I'll show you for this one actually then now looks down this access and what that, what that might look like leading to, to the pedestrian underpass. All these options, we tried to have them prepared separate of development intensity, so that they could be compared apples to apples. We did detailed analysis for unit counts, and what, what level of development could be resulting, and we kind of came up with two, two different levels. The high intensity would actually require structured parking, and the low intensity would look primarily at surface parking. With the structured parking, what that gets you is moving up to a mixture of three to five-story mixed-use buildings with commercial on the ground floor, and residential units that would be in flats as well as townhomes. In the low-intensity scheme with surface parking, you're really capping at about three stories. Um, we also would be, there probably would be potential for some single-story commercial uses with, you know, parking behind, and the residential would be primarily townhouses, um, towards the back, cuz the townhouses can very much easier self-park. Um, the difference between the two is about a hundred thousand square feet of commercial with two-hundred-and-seventy-five units versus seventy thousand square feet of commercial with sixty units. Um, those numbers could be changed slightly depending on parking. We were really looking at about one parking space per unit on average across, across the entire site. What, what some of these intensities could look like, um, this is an example of a high-intensity mixed-use building. Again, this here being the same, the same building. Um, the lower intensity, the, the three-story mixed-use building. And then these are the live-work units. Um, these would probably also be prevalent in the, the low, the low intensity. Um, what it is, is a ground floor commercial space with residential above. It's still getting about three stories. Um, you can see, kinda here, there's a mixture of uses along the ground floor from a Quiznos, and sorry, it's not quite showing up in this picture, but it's, um, office space down towards the corner. Um, it's this type of flexibility that we will be talking about in some of those areas where it might not necessarily be all ground floor commercial. Sorry, excuse me, ground floor retail. Another example of a live-work unit. Um, here again, showing how a live-work unit on a corner can pretty easily transition into residential. Um, this one also shows, um, a less intense use, a live-work, you often see the two doors, one would be going up towards the residential above, and the second providing off it, uh, access to the ground floor commercial space. A flexible frontage, uh, this is an example here of one that again has the two doors and could become commercial in the future by, you know, filling in the sidewalk and pulling out the shrubs. However, in the short term, this is functioning as a residential unit on the ground floor, and with these additional features providing the privacy needed for a residential unit. This is another frontage type that we've been looking at. Um, it's a shop front. Again, here, this is an example of a historic one, but these actually could be something that could be applied to new buildings as well, providing passage on the sidewalk, but that provides a separation between the passing pedestrian and the residential use, or if a commercial use, it could be, provide area for spill-out seating for a restaurant. Townhouses, I wanted to make sure when we talked about townhouses, we were talking about a, a more urban condition of a townhouse. Um, these are actually, it's a very simple facade plane, um, but they are broken up to look like a series of buildings, so you can still, still read the buildings that are in them. Um, here isn't even another, a more urban one, um, this is facade is broken up into four different units. Um, it is a very simple facade, that's straightforward, but actually how the materials are applied, and then also the frontage type is really what helps, the, with the stoop helps make this place be a little more special. Um, we did wanna talk about some of the residential frontages, making sure that they did help create a place. We are gonna be dealing with some topography on the site, um, because the back of the site does slope down in order to get the, the underpasses from the railroad, so that some of these units may wanna be slightly elevated, so that they aren't looking right out onto the berm, uh, the berm of the railroad. Um, with this, I'm gonna turn it back over to Jim to talk about some of the staff comments on these options.
Thank you, Chris. Um, kind of, we're nearing the end, just as a heads-up of the presentation, but what I wanted to kind of point out, you, you viewed the various options. Staff had some, some opportunity to review the slides and review, you know, the, the options, uh, several weeks ago, and we kind of kicked them around, and, and for the sake of just facilitating and getting the conversation going, wanted to kind of throw out, you know, some just first kind of initial comments on some of these options. We're not wedded in any of the options, we're just really using this to kind of start the discussion, uh, and get some, some useful beneficial comments, comments. One of the things we noticed is, uh, just, uh, the narrowing, uh, suggestion would be possibly to narrow the park. Uh, this would, you know, help sync up and better align with, uh, the connection point, uh, on West Capitol. That way, we're not having to do any improvements to, uh, an improved road right there. Uh, so we've kind of moved that throat to the left, and basically, make it more efficient for turning movements, and again, reduce construction activity to existing conditions. Another comment would be, as you see here, there's, seems to be kind of a narrow, very median, and one of the comments that we discussed is just maybe, adding some functionality to the median, it's more or less, why is it there? Because what it's doing is, in some cases, if you have a parking arrangement, say diagonal, you're adding more conflict, and you're tightening that space. So, maybe, you know, and, a way to kind of improve this would be to actually increase the size of the median, and maybe do no parking and just, you know, have traffic flow. Um, the other thing is, ensure that land use is, excuse the typo, uh, ensure that, you know, that they lend itself to public safety, because what, we wanna make sure is, if we do develop these kind of frontage areas along this kind of park setting, we wanna make sure we have, you know, land uses that complement the park, meaning, you know, for safety reasons, you could have commercial buildings that basically close down at five, and your eyes on the street, and no activity actually doesn't occur at the park, and that could be kind of a, you know, a, a breeding ground or, you know, a location to, you know, having that activity occur that shouldn't. So, you know, when looking at programming for, uh, the space, and mixed-use and the commercial kind of pattern, we're thinking, you know, we wanna make sure that we can capture some type of businesses or, you know, commercial activity that's open a little bit later into the evening. So we kind of, you know, thought about that when we viewed this. And then, one thing we did notice, and, you know, Chris touched on it, you know, the experience site, you know, as we all know, we're glad that that is no longer there, but, you know, this really characterizes kind of the level of frontage you're working with, with this site, is very minimal, and, you know, we kind of thought about, you know, how can you increase that frontage to, you know, give it a little bit more frontage, rather than a very narrow, kind of pointy type of frontage? And then on Option B, um, we kind of felt that they pulled the intersection too close to Tower Bridge Gateway, again, hitting on the same kind of concern about new improvements to make attorney movements, as well as, uh, new construction to the median. And then, we did notice too, on this one, that possibly it, it may be a little bit too close to the railroad over crossing here, and maybe consider pushing it a little bit further to the west. And then on this one, we kind of thought, you know, this is a nice, somewhat of a pocket park, but what is the utility of the park? I think, you know, we identified that, being that its location is tucked in the back of the actual overall scheme of this development, what really can go on in the back of that park? And it's kind of, again, kind of eyes on the park, uh, kind of theory and concept. And then we also noticed that this, this particular two-acre piece is pretty much, you know, very prominent, overly prominent for, uh, this area, and maybe it could be kind of schemed a little bit, so that it's, it's subdivided or scaled back in size. And then, kind of what we touched on is related to the internal parking structure size of this two-acre, uh, block here, would be something that would be compromised, uh, if we did scale it back, so we recognize that. And then, on the Option C, as you see, and we all know, there's a, a rural tract that runs on the rear of the site. There was some kind of comment and discussion, just real, how much utility you got off of these, uh, kind of crescent properties and parcels here. Um, they would be programmed for some type of use, be it, let's say, live-work or, you know, residential, but, you know, in the, I think the short term, there was a concern that what it would amount to would be just parking, and then it would never, you know, manifest itself to some type of development. So there was some concern that we had over that. And again, the same, uh, condition regarding the relation- And again, the same condition regarding the relationship to the over crossing to the actual entryway here. And then on this one, there's a lot of discussion related to the functionality related to this plaza and the Paseo. I mean, we definitely like the concept of a Paseo. I think what, you know, a lot of us here in West Sacramento know, you know, I can point to a few locations where there have been trying to implement outside dining or just type of some park element in connection with commercial or dining experience. And it becomes very difficult to kind of find a balance to program, you know, the size of a commercial operation with the size of the out down, outdoor dining experience. And we are concerned that maybe we are chewing off too much of an area for an outdoor type of plaza and are concerned and would want to know a little bit more detail, what exactly is going to be on these edges to this particular plaza area? And how do we ensure that we can get the right mixture of a type of land use that would facilitate and make this a busy place as opposed to in some areas as we know in the city as kind of lackluster or dead spaces? And then on this one, we thought about parking along the median maybe here to add that element as a thought. And then lastly, in some general observations, many, you know, there's a cell tower on the site. You know, we need to contemplate that, either relocation or maybe integrate it from a site design standpoint, incorporate it into the site. And then another one would be the welcome point, basically is a civic significance of Tower Bridge Gateway. So what we're referring to is this kind of node here on the corner. How do you get that to be kind of that key civic significance within the site? Another integration and discussion point was integrating the streetcar into the overall design. That'll be something that we look at in the next round. And then, you know, as I mentioned, the edge conditions on the back of house here, as you see here with the rail and making, and then another one overall for all options is building size and programming. There's, you know, building in the industry standards for the depth of retail or commercial space. We wanted to make sure that whatever we plan from a land use scheme, that the size of the building can accommodate that depth for retail and we don't find ourselves over utilizing space or under utilizing space. And then lastly, alterations to construction of the intersection at, at Garden, just, I think I touched on that as well, is just all these improvements, you know, have some sort of possible, you know, construction and redesign of that area. And then that kind of was overall the consensus from staff. And what we, what we have now is just basically the various options to go over with the planning commission. I think what I'd like to conclude on is the fact that we do need to return this to the planning commission in January for a recommendation afforded on the city council. We're looking again for any comments and discussion on what you, you viewed today. What will be coming back to the planning commission will be a more refined package, basically a, a planning document that will include kind of the high, low intensity that Chris mentioned. And in addition to that, you will get some frontage standards, you'll get some more detail regarding design, type of element requirements or, you know, maybe standards, recommendations. You'll get a little bit more detail on, you know, some heights of the building as well as some setback related type of planning detail. So it'll be a more comprehensive document than what you're seeing today. It'll be pretty much put together and include all that information. So again, we'd like to return that back in January and we'll incorporate your comments in the document and then we move forward. So thank you for your time.
Sorry, thank you, Jim. I have actually no request from the public to speak. There's no, no formal hearing tonight. This is just a workshop. And so I will just go around the commission and see if there are any comments and possibly provide early input, skipping you, Mr. Chase.
A couple of questions, I think maybe the applicant might be the best one. In the PowerPoint, there were, there were two of the renderings that addressed kind of the, in alternate B and C, particularly the kind of the public amenity, the park area. It appeared, as I recall, in both of the rendering views of those public, for those two alternatives, that they appeared to be fairly flat, whereas in fact, I would, would have thought that that was where we were going to be getting into a grade change. I don't know if you can...
Yeah, so it was option, the last two, option C.
The last two options, yeah.
Option B and option C. On, on C, ideally this front level would be level, level and there would be some grade transitioning down along the street. We would hope to keep this access street up high enough that you could actually access these alleys would be at grade and if these were townhouses, that it would be tuck under parking so that the units would be up a little higher to deal with the railroad that would, the railroad berm that's right, that's right behind them. But we could look at, you know, there could be some aspects of this Paseo that would have some stepping down as it went towards the back.
The northerly portion of that Paseo right in there, it would seem that that somewhere in that area going to the north is where you are going to be needing to make quite a, quite a drop. Can you, can you find, actually, is the, the rendering of that view on?
Yes, excuse me for a second. Just let me go back. This, this view here.
Yeah, exactly. It seems to just go off very flat. I'm, I'm suspecting that's going to drop off quite a bit. I like, wondering how that would be addressed. Actually, I'm wondering on that one too, if that would diminish the value of that as a, you know, public amenity as it's dropping out of sight there. Same question on item C too. Again, well, we're just on C, on B as well. Let me go to the second one you had. Again, it appears to just be all at level and yet in that area, there's going to be quite a grade change at some point there.
Yeah, it's about at least 10 feet across the site. This plaza here would be, would be lower at that level since it is at this street elevation as it comes under. And this plaza would be higher. As you were looking down the street, that's actually where that grade change, grade change would happen along the street. But if it's desired, there could be an attractive element. I don't think we have any issue with there actually, as it was further developed, there being steps, steps or some type of change that would be a, a design feature of this scheme.
With ADA requirements, there will be quite a bit of ramping involved in there then, so...
Thank you.
Good, thanks for the clarification.
Jerry, who comes?
Yeah, I had a quick question for the applicant and you might have said this. Is the high and the low density available for options A, B, and C?
Yeah.
So it's actually, it's actually six options instead of...
It's, it's six options, but I, I think... Sorry.
So I could have high and low in both A and B and C?
Yes, and I think we're trying to leave the high and low discussion separate of the framework that is potentially established. What we're trying to address are kind of those four items that we identified in the, the beginning to kind of set the framework. A lot of the high and low is kind of out of our control as far as dependent upon the market. It could even be something that's phased, so you might end up with a combination between high and low. When we were working with city staff, it was just discussed that there is kind of a trigger at what, with the parking, when you introduce structured parking, what does that get you? And when you don't have structured parking, what does that get you?
Okay.
Can I point out too, that, to make the point that we're not approving and asking you with the plan to approve a project? You know, there's going to be some option and some variability here. So this is just really getting to kind of some detail that gives us a spread of mix of various uses, land use types as well as frontage types and kind of layering that within the plan so that when we do have a potential developer, we can kind of say, we're not going to eat, it would be foolish to give them a plan and say, do it this way, that's it. No, we want to give them, again, back to my kind of initial statement, maximum utility, some flexibility. But obviously, you know, we want to kind of program it, you know, on a low and a high intensity to capture, you know, the flexibility of the market as well as the scheme of a development plan that may come in. So that's kind of what the document will look like, not really focused into this whole particular, you know, option. So there'll be a variability and some...
And it's for all three? So there's no option that would limit you to say low or, or high?
Yeah, correct. And by the way, can I say, Jeremy, I'm sorry, Chris is the consultant, not the applicant, so a big kind of difference here.
Sorry. That's usually where the applicant stands, so...
He's supporting for us, so, yeah, yeah.
I also wanted to point out, you know, really these frameworks were developed to solicit feedback. We are kind of prepared for some people to say, I like this aspect of this plan, but this aspect of this other plan. We really had those four questions that we were trying to test, various ways of answering them and how they could be put, how they could be put together. So ideally, when we get to actually the plan document, it makes it easiest if we are showing a plan consistently throughout the document. We will be talking about alternatives that were studied, but the, the goal is to kind of get some feedback from you before we actually get into the plan development document so we don't go off on the wrong way. As, as Jim mentioned, we don't really have a horse in this race as far as which one option is picked. We're really just trying to get feedback on him.
Cindy?
So thank you for your work and it's, it is very intriguing and it's fun to create something. For me, I think the elements that, I, I think having the plaza or having a, a park be prominent on the, on the frontage, I suppose, the West Capital, current West Capital is important. I, I'm intrigued by, by possibly moving to simply a pedestrian bike route in the back. I, I need to understand a little bit more about what, what that might create, what other issues that that might cause. But I think that, that's intriguing as we start to see density build around in, in this area because I think we need to have more support for pedestrian bike and biking. So I, I think playing around a bit more with those elements for me and, and just keeping the prominence of, of a plaza or a park. And I, I think at this point, so preliminary, I think that's the extent of my, of my comments.
No, thank you. Exactly. We're here to provide initial input and give some feedback to go back to the drawing board. Mr. Chase?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, back to the usability of the site dimensions and whatnot. On, on scheme C, the, the, the back of the house property, say, the two points, 2.26 acres, I wonder dimensionally, is that, are those within the 65, 70 foot depths? Do you know which would be ideal, retail depths for sure?
Yeah, for, for, so for retail, we are typically looking at 50 to 60, 50 to 60 feet. We usually like setting 50 as the minimum.
More leasable.
On some of the, the flex spaces, we have previously regulated a minimum of 30 that would still allow for some tuck under parking or something behind it. Those are, those are the approximate dimensions that we were looking at for those.
Thanks.
More? No comments, thank you.
Actually, I'm glad you asked me. Might, might are just a couple of straight out comments. One, and most importantly, the planning commission and later the city council came up with the recommendation that we not eliminate West Capital Avenue, that that continue to be a thoroughfare east and west through the city. There was comments in the past that it was going to go through the Welcome Grove Motel and they were going to take that road out that way and all kinds of things. And it was thoroughly said, don't change. West Cap needs to stay where West Cap is. Now, it's been a while, so I mean, you know, we might want to talk about it again, but that was the policy that the planning commission and the city council had. My other couple of quick comments are, I would wonder if we might be better off if some of our, more of our commercial was against the rail? Because that would be a buffer to try to get rid of some of the noise should trains use that area. The live work units, I think that's a grand idea, providing you have parking so somebody can park to get into them. Our live work units that we had on Sacramento Avenue, there's no parking and we're having a terrible time with people being able to keep them operational because there's nowhere for them to park. So there's one spot and if you ever had two customers, you're dead. So, you know, we want to make sure that that works too. And, you know, overall, I think this is just a grand idea to look at the plans and the ideas that you come up with. And I think when staff had some of their comments, which dealt with, you know, maybe we'll have a trolley car going through, if you could have that in. I think those are all great things, but all of it has to be put together in its entirety. And I, I have no idea what I think is good. I just know that those are some of the things that come to mind to me real quickly that we need to look at.
Thank you. I'm going to actually ask you to, to take a seat for a second. I know this is a workshop, so I am going to keep, keep it open. I did get a request to speak before I wrap it up. Mr. Alex Kelter? And if you could repeat your name, so we all know that I got it right or wrong.
I got it right. Alex Kelter. Live at 805 Platinum Lane, Iron Works, just down the street. My question is, is it too early to be thinking about things like, this whole area is a five minute walk from Raleigh Field where at various times, you've got ideally 14,000 people collected who are, who may be, may want to spend some money before or after the game, who may love baseball so much that they want to live over there. But I, I didn't see or haven't heard a lot of discussion about connectivity to that neighboring land use. Maybe it's too early in the process, but as someone who lives close by because he does like baseball, it occurred to me. So...
Good point.
Just an idea to have, have something in mind with regard to connectivity to, to Raleigh Field.
Thank you, Mr. Kelter. I'm going to try and summarize and wrap up some of our comments. I am definitely supportive of the pedestrian connectivity. It is extremely important as well as bicycle, although I'm not quite sure where the bicycle path would be going to because if Phase Two of the West Sac Commons goes in, it would just dead end there. If it doesn't, we potentially have some options. Yes, it's never too early to think about planning. This is why we're here. This is the, the backbone of the project. We're talking about where buildings go, where roads go, where parks go, overall, stuff that goes in. Not exactly what it looks like yet, the backbone. Some, just some personal comments of mine. I would not narrow the park if you intend to keep it as a park. There's, there's a limit. At one point, it will just become a wide road median with grass on it and it won't be very useful. If you're talking commercial, maybe transfer it to such a, like a promenade, something that allows the test, pedestrian access to the commercial, especially if you're putting commercial fronting West Capital or Garden. Those are busy streets and you need that, a good pedestrian interaction to be able to want to walk to your commercial, especially if it's along a busy street and there's no inside access. If you put the parking garage on the inside, for example, it's an odd inside action, access. There was comments about commercial along the rail versus residential. I, I know that when we put residential around, along the rail, we, we consider it very carefully because it's noisy. I'm not sure what parking structure options we may have to put along rail instead. If we did that, it could potentially pull it closer to your commercial. I forgot which plan it was, but when, where you put the, on the, where you put the parking on the north side in that triangle, that's tucked way away and people don't walk enough. I don't think they'll want to walk that far, so...
I get the idea.
So if we could make sure to, to maintain some, some promenade space between the commercial and the busy streets, that would be great, maximizing the potential of development. Streetcar, I know that it looks to be that we're abandoning an alignment. The old Tower Bridge Gateway off ramp essentially gets eaten up. That would be an interesting promenade, plaza, streetcar, station potentially. So nice rounded corner, just, just a suggestion or an option. Trying to get through these, just bullet point. I think that's about it for me though. I think that's about it for me though.
Let me go another comment.
And one more first.
Yeah, David, I don't remember the guy that wanted to develop the property over where they're building now, that we just did the lot thing. The one before and he had all the townhomes in there and they were all kind of different and had different frontages on it. That might be a thought too, that would fit in there, that would make it, you know, it'd be something you could show Chris and his crew that here's another idea of how that worked. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that was the Washington, the first Washington Street property.
Yeah, but I mean, their, their frontages were all different, some were brick, some were wood. It was just different. Might make it look a little better in that area because we're not talking about a million townhomes, but we're talking about some nice townhomes in there. So just a thought, I'm sorry.
David, what's the option for, I was really throwing it out there, for closing off West Sacramento on the other side? Allowing this, this, the underpass to be the access to Rayleigh's corporate buildings and the, the park back in there, closing it from the other end?
Well, one of the things that's happening that's, you know, independent of all of this is the improvements that need to occur to that structure so that it can continue to accommodate rail volumes that are desired to go over that. And as everyone knows, it's already fairly narrow as you go under there now. There was an item on last night's city council agenda related to that. It's, it's a possibility that those structural improvements needed to that bridge may, in effect, end up closing that off anyway. So that's, that's, that's a, that's a very real rolled issue right now that we're, we're dealing with. But for this purpose, we are certainly not closing it off or, one way or the other advocating closing it or advocating keeping it open with this effort. But that may, that decision may be made for us through the improvements that are need to happen to that bridge. It's possible.
Okay, just, just thinking of opportunity, the intersection on the other side is kind of a mess with that double intersection, so if we could eliminate hassle there by flipping the closure end, thought it might have been an opportunity. Just to keep on your mind. I think that's, nope, Mr. Chase.
I thought it was questions before, if I could add a few, few comments. Back to, I think, something that Charlie mentioned, to me, a, a value, and I see it essentially in both. And I did not see this in our diagrams on option B because we did not, I did not realize it was proposed plaza or park at the, kind of the western edge of the, the 2.96 acre site. I think either of the options, which to me would be A or B, that provide a green space or an open vista, public amenity vista on access with West Capitol as you're heading east would be, I think, beneficial. And I think there's a, a strong point that so much effort has gone into West Capitol to date, I think that would be a, a real capping of it. You know, to have, to me, alternative C doesn't have that. And I think, you know, to me, that, that would be a better location for the open space. I think, Charlie, I think hit on something too earlier, the, that, that portion of West Capitol that does right now, you know, goes under the tracks. To me, there's a certain character to that that I think is really nice. The curvature, it slows you down, you're going, you're diving under, whether you're driving, bicycling, walking, or pushing a cart. I mean, it's, it's sort of a comfortable place to be going and people use it. And so I think, you know, anything that takes away that vehicular connectivity such as C, I, I probably wouldn't prefer that as much. I think something that allows that to go through, which certainly A and B both do, would, would be beneficial. So I, I think the value of that park there would be the, the interesting thing, I, I think, knowing that there was a plaza planned on that 2.96 acre portion of B, interestingly enough, that is also, I think, the most efficient from a buildable area standpoint of the three alternatives, which is to me, interesting, it turns out that way. But that would certainly, I think, add some favor in terms of its value that way as well. I, I think, item C is probably the least likely. I think the internal road that just comes back on itself and eliminates totally that connectivity between the old West Capitol would probably be, I think, my least favorite approach. Thank you.
All right, your staff has enough comments from us?
No, we're fine, you know, again, this will return in, in January and, you know, it'll be a pretty, well put together document. And, you know, you'll have some of your questions answered and, you know, you'll see how progress, you know, proceeds. Again, I'd like to thank the community members that have stuck it out and appreciate their feedback outside. And thank you again.
Thank you. At this point, okay, we'll close in that public workshop for that and that's it for that one. Just wanted to make sure that David's looking at me like I'm missing something though, so.
I would just wanted to offer a couple of brief comments on, when we get to informal discussion.
Okay, I think that takes us into informal discussion. Thank you, Chris, for your presentation.
Informal discussion? I actually have a comment. Tilly, I want to tell you, I drove down Jefferson Boulevard. Have you seen our water tower? If you guys have not seen the water tower, you can't tell it's there. It's the best thing going for our deal that we've done in a long time. I was just really impressed by it. I mean, you see it, but you don't see it. And it, it blends in better than anything else we could have done. I like it.
Oh, thank you for that. I, I was definitely sweating that one and when it came up in the real world, it didn't look nearly as tall or as large as I thought it would.
I don't think it did to anybody, or it's the way the tree blocks it off because we moved it back towards Jefferson. It's not bad at all. I just think it's really great. And if you haven't seen it, if you haven't seen our new welcome to West Sacramento Water Tower, you need to drive by because it really looks good. And with that, was there another Jim comment?
No, I just, I totally agree with you, Charlie.
Okay.
With that, and Beverly's birthday being tomorrow, I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Can't close it yet?
Oh, just, just real quickly, this will be our last meeting for 2012. So I would like to thank the commission for their service this year and also extend our thanks to Commissioner Chase, who will be leaving us after tonight's meeting. Service on the commission wasn't particularly long, but I think it was particularly valuable as well. So thank you for that and we will see you all next year.
Thank you. I'd like to actually second that and thank Bob for his service and invaluable input over the past two years.
Thank you very much.
And we're closed.